All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is the joint Canyon City Council and the Parks and Recreation District. Roll call please. Councilmember Dennehy.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez, absent. Councilmember Higginson. Councilmember Reed, absent. Councilmembers B Smith.
Here.
Mayor Burton Cameron.
Here.
Mayor Smith, here. I'm gonna turn the time over to you, Ryan.
Yeah, so when we had our city council retreats a month or so ago, month and a half ago, we talked about having a joint session with the Rec District Board regarding the Recreation Aquatic Center and the planning process and where they're at in that process. And I believe the Rec District Board was also kind of getting to that point where they wanted to come and talk to us as well. So that's where we're at right now. And I'll turn it over to Kyle for you guys to do your introduction and kind of give us a lay of the land and where you guys are at with the Rec District, the Aquatic Center.
So in what you have the projects, we are still moving forward, of course, the survey numbers that happened in early 2020, pre-COVID, were overwhelmingly in favor of a tax question for a Recreation Center. We know that that is pre-COVID. We understand, we respect that, we acknowledge that. We are looking at doing another survey in a couple of months, probably maybe one and a half, that would go out somewhere a little bit, to see what the appetite of the community is now, and how much has changed. But monetarily, it is important to understand the cost of these facilities. The cost is rising and we don't see it slowing down. For perspective, Montrose, the Recreation Center they built was 83,000 square feet. For those same dollars now, and by the way, that opened in November of 2016. For those same dollars now, you can get 55,000 square feet. So you're looking at 20,000 less square feet. And by the way, that doesn't even brick and mortar in a six-lane lap pool. That puts a six-lane lap pool outdoors. So I just want to make sure everybody understands where this is at and where the cost is at and have their eyes wide open. We have signed a letter of engagement with Steeple for bond underwriting, Hudson, Alice, Hannah, and Matt. We've also signed a letter of engagement with Beyond Your Base for public policy work. So that would be survey, be ready for the election, helping out with any materials, things along those lines. And that is Paul Hamley, who we are working with. So we have signed on with those two to help get a pass. They're both very motivated to see this move forward. They were actually involved initially in 2018, in the early stages of the planning, and it kind of went away as they went off to their own endeavors. We know that we need to move forward the Rec Center. Our pool is planning to open this year, our outdoor pool. However, the moment the sand filters fail, and they will fail within the next three years, according to engineers, and the moment that happens, pool's done. There's no point in replacing the sand filters because there's still other issues within the pool facility itself. We can rebuild an outdoor pool at a minimum, at a minimum cost vanilla outdoor pool. It's gonna run you somewhere around eight million. Aquatics are not cheap. So if you want a year-round facility such as a Rec Center, we're looking right now at a $30 million bond. And even that doesn't get the lap pool brick and mortar in. That would be another five million on top of that. City of Aurora has built, just opened, or opened a Rec Center. 61,000 square feet, cost 34 million. They just broke ground on another one that's just short of 42 million, 62,000 square feet. So yeah, our price is right in about line. That's how expensive Rec Centers are. There's a lot of work to do as far as location. We are talking, we have submitted a letter of intent to the group that has the abbey of the contract. We've submitted a draft, thank you. Yes, a draft letter of intent. We are waiting to hear back. We've been told that we should hear back within, in less than a week. We will have a special board meeting on the Rec Center on Tuesday, where the board will hopefully be then going into executive session at some point to discuss where that is at. Obviously, that's not ready to be on the record yet. We are in the middle of negotiations. We look at it as no different than when we negotiate. You're in a very similar process in how we approached it. We believe that this group is motivated to be here at the same time. We're also motivated to offer Recreation Centers to the community. When you look at the price of construction, steel, you look at interest rates and where they're at. There's no such thing, I think, it's a good time for some of these projects, but if we're gonna pull the trigger, now, this is it. I mean, it's, to be fair, if we wait another two years, we could be even in a worse situation, so.
Say back into making one election?
Yes, if you're gonna pull the trigger, this is it. We are looking at a property tax question. We know that according to the surveys, locations mattered and the abbey location was preferred, especially over Veterans Park. Veterans Park would have been a no vote.
Don't even mention that word, people already crucified, just send me to jail.
I know, that's why I'm saying, that is a no. That is a no.
If it's weird though.
Yeah, but that's a hard pass. But the other thing is, sales tax seems to be a hard pass as well because of sales tax right now is at 8.4% within the city of Canyon City. So that leaves us with one option. Now, to be fair, some people in the public, they go, well, how did Aurora pay for theirs? Well, they paid for it through recreational marijuana taxes. So I am not here lobbying for recreational marijuana tax by any stretch of the imagination. That is not at all my intent. My intent is simply to give you the facts of what is happening right now. We would offer programming similar probably to Anestas Park, Eaton, Montrose within the facility. We are looking at a smaller facility than Montrose. To build their size facility, we're in 40s, we're well over $40 million. Now's the time to move forward. You know, we believe at this point with the project, we do need to negotiate land. We think the abbey is the best location. We did meet with Fremont County Commissioners, updated them on with the project. Is that similar to what we're doing with you now and that we can just have open discussion? We have two board members here. I do not know if Brett was able to join online. Greg is trying to get here. Mike was unable to make it, but Greg Torito is trying to get here. They can answer any questions you may have and where we're at. So that's kind of the Cliff Notes version of the project.
Yes, sir. Clarifying question, on $30 million, does that include tenting the lap pool?
Yes, that is tenting the lap pool, that is not brick and mortar.
Right, yeah, I got that. But I do want to make sure that there's, you know, you address the bubble.
So to brick and mortar, to brick and mortar a six-lane pool would cost another $5 million. Now, whether we can pull money from, and by the way, right now, we're not making any assumptions on the building. We've made no assumptions that we're going to receive a grant, no assumptions that we're getting URA money, no assumptions that we're getting a deal on the letter of intent. That's it. We've made no assumptions at this point. What we are trying to do is figure out if there is a property tax question. Can there be premium on top of that? And that deals with bond sales, that's way above my knowledge base. And that's why you have somebody that deals with bonds to explain that. And so we're gonna get better numbers on the 27th, as Steeple is running those now. But, but we did not take any assumptions. So there was never any URA, a DOLA grant. There are certain grants we qualify for, GOCO, we do not, Daniel Spunk, we do not. But we would qualify possibly for Gates, maybe Adventure, possibly Altimar, DOLA, and then of course, possibly looking at a URA, but that would be for that committee to decide that. But we are, and then of course, there's a capital campaign. Could there possibly be donations to other organizations? But I think when you see that it's gonna cost another $5 million to brick and mortar that pool, I think it's gonna change some of the conversation with a lot of folks. But that's kind of where it is. These are not cheap items. Rec Centers are typically the most expensive publicly-owned facility in a community. That is typical. It's not new, it's just our turn to have the discussion and try to see what we can do to make it happen. The last time anything was on the ballot like this was 2000, and a Rec Center then would have cost $9 million. So 21 years later, here we are, it's keep adding money to it.
Did you say you don't have a no levy yet?
We don't know what the bill levy increase would be. We still, so it's hard to determine that when you're waiting on numbers from the assessor, because this is a reassessment year. So you don't actually know what those mill levy increase numbers would look like. And I'd hate to throw out a number that would be incorrect.
And are you also saying that you're not making a public statement on how much you're negotiating for the abbey land? I'm just curious if there's ways of the city.
We've probably talked about ways the city can help without talking about negotiations.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, you need to, we're not at the point where we even know what hard numbers we're talking about yet. We have a hard number, we haven't gotten a response. Other than that, our hard number suggestion is not good enough. But beyond that, I don't know if we can really get into, for a lot of reasons, at least of which is we can. Negotiations are, I'm betting from seller perspective as well, we don't want to scare them off.
Do you have a cash stash to pay for the property?
It would be, the sale of the property would be completely dependent on a yes vote in the board that would have to be written into a contract. Again, that we can't share.
Now, the numbers you're telling us now, that's to build the Recreation Center, whatever these want to be, for $30 million. Once you look at building that, have you put into your dollar figures the amount of money it's gonna take to continue operating, staff, maintenance, all this other stuff? You know, you can build it, but can you service it? And have you, have you guys looked at that process also?
Yes, we have. Okay, so there were actually two pro formas done. The first one was done in the initial feasibility study conducted by Ballack King. And the pro forma on that one put it at somewhere around $1 million cost deficit. We disagreed with that number. We challenged it and we brought it up to the people involved in the group and we lost that battle. We then, when BRS was then hired, which is Barker, Maker, CCAT, they did the pro forma and redid it. And I believe we have a more accurate number. And it is less than $400,000, so there's a significant difference between $1 million and $400,000. In order to meet that, yes, there would need to be a second question. So, and to clarify, so there'd be two questions. One, one would be a bond to build the facility, construct it, have your soft costs, your hard costs, all of that sort of stuff. The second would be a question, one to, there would be an increase for what the Rec District currently does. We're in a position where we do need a mill levy increase for what we currently do. There's never been a mill levy increase from the Recreation District. We're still at 3.509. And back in 82, a dollar went into play. It took away, because there was a time when that could flow and the board could talk about it, to cap at like five mils or something. But that went away, 1982, a dollar. It was taper hit, that definitely would. Then, so we have to do, we have to figure out a mill levy for what we do now. But then to operate the Rec Center, you're looking at a mill levy at $400,000. Okay, you don't want to throw out numbers, but it won't be, it would be somewhere lower. I mean, right now, ours is 3.509, and that gets us a little over $800,000 for operation. So you can do the math and kind of get an idea of where that number may be.
I just, I hear a lot of numbers all the time, but for some reason, I had a 72 million dollar figure. Is the 30, does that include infrastructure, land cost? That's all included in the 30 million?
That initial 72 million, that was when we first started talking about.
It was 42, by the way.
Oh, it was 42.
It had been scaled back. And that was where everybody was putting in suggestions, what we can.
Right, right. Okay, so that's why.
That was an 82,000 square foot facility.
Okay, this is significantly lower. So I was like, where, why is this so much cheaper than what I had initially thought it was gonna cost? And my second question is, I think I had heard rumors on like corporate investor to offset the property tax or bonds? Is that not on the table anymore?
No, no, anything to raise, to raise money would work. But again, you're looking at a non-brick-and-mortar outdoor pool. So that's $5 million. So we have to raise that $5 million somehow.
Well, I think what Brandon was talking about, though, is the situation, the proposal we heard, where a private investor would build it, we used to run the.
Oh, right. Oh, so you're talking.
Yeah, and that's not, I think we've kind of dismissed that, it's not being feasible in the taxpayers' best interest.
Why? Why? I don't think we need to know for public.
Sure. And I don't know if you want to take this topic. One is, number one, we wouldn't be eligible for a number of grants that we would otherwise be eligible for in terms of building the project. We would still be out the same amount of money, but we wouldn't actually own the property and end of that, still gotta negotiate a purchase of property at the end of the lease agreement. All those kind of tend to, it puts us in a worse situation with no real financial benefit. So on the opportunity zone, and forgive me if I get this wrong, and if Rob Brown was watching, really forgive me if I get this wrong. The issue on that is, so if an investor, if somebody comes in to build a facility, once they reach the end of the term of that opportunity zone, that facility is then sold, and that's where they get their tax credits. You're asking a public entity then to purchase that back, and we're not going to pay a premium on that to then, to where they've made their money. This is not gonna be sold to a private company, that it's gonna be sold, it's gonna be sold to the Recreation District. We are still going to have to pass a tax to pay for this. Whether it was city, county, rec district, regardless, somebody's gonna have to pass a tax to then pay back either the bonds or the private investor. There's gonna have to be some sort of payment. Now, if a private investor wants to come in and say, hey, look, I'm willing to make a $5 million donation as a tax write-off, hey, we're all in. We can, we can figure that out, that can still happen. But at the same time, not being eligible for all those grant opportunities that we just mentioned, with the exception of URA, all of those require that the Recreation District owns the facility and owns the land. Without that, it doesn't, it's not gonna work. So we really don't think at this time, it was, and the board discussed this at length, and I'll let Jim and Nick chime in, but when the board spoke, that's not a direction at this time that we wanted to go. Because at the same time, you're still having to pass literally the exact same question. The only difference is, one, we own the facility, the other one, we don't.
I appreciate that clarification because I think it kind of got crossed somewhere in my brain. So I'm sure the public appreciates that clarification.
Absolutely. Like I said, if I got anything wrong, Rob would be the first one to correct me. Trust me, I'm fine with that, correct the way. I, you know, he is, he's probably one of the better experts on it. But, and unfortunately for Rec Center, there is nothing like a best grant, where Canyon City School's able to build two facilities, and a third of it went to the taxpayers, two-thirds was paid by best grant, which is marijuana money. There is nothing like that for Rec Centers unless you do a recreational question like Aurora did, and they have said, we're dumping that in. They've done three Rec Centers now with recreational marijuana taxes.
I really hope you wouldn't go that high.
We can't, that's not even an option for us.
I don't even think about it, because you gotta look at Aurora, it's big, huge, and every guy.
I don't disagree.
They have the ability to get that money, okay? This is small town Canyon City. Even Plebbo isn't really getting that much out of their marijuana. They're getting something, but they're not even getting enough money for a Rec Center and all their stuff.
I understand, but we have received phone calls on that. And so I think it's important that for full disclosure to the public, that we mention how they're getting it. And because they're looking at going, why are we not? And you have to have full disclosure. Yes, there's a big difference between the population of Canyon City and Fremont County as compared to the city of Aurora. Nobody's gonna question it, it is a massive difference. However, the public needs to understand that there is that difference.
And it's the same conversation as mentioned, Springs, but they serviced the entire city and called ours. And so when we get to WAB, also for the streets, 1% sales tax, we have a lot of people saying that Recreation Marijuana could pay for all of our streets to be fixed. And so an important part of that conversation was to do some calculating and determination of how much money do we basically think that Canyon City would earn from recreational marijuana? And what we determined at that time was it was really, really low. And that was an important piece to be able to come back with, just a factual conversation. Because like you said, that is.
Yeah, and we can't propose that. That would have to be an IGA. So for example, Montrose did an IGA on, with the Recreation District and the city. The city passed a sales tax and then it's passed through to the Recreation District to build their Rec Center. So that's how they built it.
Tim, did you have something?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. Following up on Brandon a little bit. As your board, again, I understand private investing, but there's also private donation. A little bit, a little different. Has there been any letters, anything like that, that you guys have thought of that possibly you could send out to different local corporations, statewide corporations, anything of that nature?
Once we have elevator drawings, we're waiting to get that. That is something that we're waiting on the letter from Tim for. Without it, it's just words.
Okay.
And once you have elevator drawings, 3D samples of what a facility could look like, then you have something to sell or market.
That's right.
Without that, it's just words on a piece of paper.
We would love to say it's gonna be right here, this is what it's gonna look like. And I get that, that would definitely help. I agree with that 100%. My other question is, are we still set it? Are you still just looking for the 30 million, right? Or you didn't go for 35 million? I mean, if we can put an indoor pool for 5 million more, I think people, or maybe I'm way wrong.
And so, just so we're all on the same page, and we probably should have brought like the slide that shows. There is already an aquatic center indoors inside the facility.
Okay.
So it's like a warmer body pool, Recreation Pool with slides. And so that's decked out. And then the other part is the upper pool, or like the swimming pools.
Yeah, 25 yards, six lane.
Basically, you know, first one meets everything.
Sure, absolutely.
That's what I'm saying. But is any, I mean, we're saying that's an additional 5 million. And I get that, I mean, understand the cost of things.
I think it came down to, through the studies and the people we've talked to, of the difference between looking at what Canyon City turned forward, what we would likely be able to pass, and that extra 5 million, I think made quite a difference, or they thought that that was probably, 30 million is probably where we're at.
That went to several purpose groups.
So there's definitely a tolerance level. It's flooding up against that 30 million.
Certainly, there's additional, there's additional things that go along with that. The, you know, the city council, city council members did go up and look at different Recreation Centers. With that, when Deena was here. You know, the, there's, there's lots of different issues, but you, 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 I believe you incur additional operational expenses for the indoor pool, heated year-round versus, you know, used during the swimming. Of course, you're talking about a tenant, right?
It's, the difference is, is negligible.
So it's just really truly construction cost.
It is.
Okay, so the tenant is, I mean, it's still plenty big enough to even hold summer meets, winter meets?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's actually, it's not bad. I mean, it's not brick and mortar.
Right, I understand that.
There's some places that have, I mean, it's.
Sure.
It still gives enough room for people to have that. In some ways, it's, some people love the idea of having an outdoor pool in Canyon City, that was in all of our, in all of our cities. I think we still might have that option, too. So, I don't know, I see some flexibility there.
Okay.
But I'm not, you know, certain either.
So some of the things that we're gonna need to do is incorporate components, especially seniors who want jog track. Make sure we have those mental purpose rooms, things along those lines. Those will matter, and especially when you look at the surveys, those did matter. And so you have to incorporate that in. So where do you invest, invest your money now? Somebody came along and said, here's a $5 million donation, brick and mortar the outdoor pool. Okay, I mean, that's, that's not really that big of a debate. But, but, but when, I thought Jim brought up a very good point on what we can afford. So for perspective, so when you're talking property tax, you have to look at what the values are within those Recreation Districts. Eaton, when they built theirs, their values are $436 million, okay? Perspective, Estes Park, you're over 350, like 370, 380 million dollars. The Recreation District, we are at right now $232 million, which means that in order to afford what they did, and when there's, you know, with Eaton and Canyon City, there's almost double the difference, what they did for four mils would require eight mils on our end. That's a big chunk for the voters, when you have to say, hey, we need to do this many mils increase. And it doesn't matter whether it would be a city question, a county question, a rec district question, it doesn't matter. That number is going to be big. And we do not have the property values of some of these other communities. Is that always gonna be that way? I don't know. Don't have a first of all, I'd like to say the answer is no. But that is something that you have to look at. Now, the good news is, you set a number on a tax question, such as you're gonna pay off this much every year. And then your mill levy, as property values goes up, that mill levy ask, like the school district is doing right now, that mill levy number drops. So it drops based on property values, because you're only paying off X amount of dollars each year. So that can be adjusted. But, but yes, the initial ask, I'm not gonna lie, if you're talking $30 million, you're gonna talk a significant mill levy increase. It is gonna be more than what they paid for the rec district now, significantly.
I have a question. Is the community committee still engaged or going to an election?
I would, I would ask that question of Brett. There is a member here, Rick Herman, I think you'd be better off to answer that question, I would.
Yeah, we're, we're, I mean, we are back to being engaged. We haven't engaged the entire original 30, 40 people. But we've been involved with a section of consultants. Pretty much have a pretty good understanding of what needs to happen between now and November.
So you guys feel like you could call in the cavalry and do something good, really quality compete? So you, you guys feel like you could call in the cavalry and do something good, really quality compete together?
We're gonna have to. I mean, November, but we're gonna have to, yeah.
Let's try to, whatever's coming up.
Well, we've been, these conversations for a while. It's coming up very fast, we know that. There's, there's also, we've talked with like people we've talked to, there's, there's a lot of them. Can't, as far as advertising, it's, you know, but you can't start to move. So, you know, we're, we're listening to the people that are advising us and, um, I think last time we talked, the rec was gonna be raising some money. Rec has to raise money somewhere around twenty five thousand.
The day that magic date starts, which is usually, I'm guessing like earlyish, you've gotta be, you've gotta have everything ready to just say.
Part of the, part of the public policy consultant too is helping prepare the rec committee. And then technically, the public policy consultant doesn't, isn't hired by or work for the rec committee, but they don't go away. You know, it's pretty much, um, they'll stick with us. They'll help us through process.
It's, that his consulting with that is donated.
It's donated, yeah.
With the rec district, it's not, but we can't, we can't campaign for a yes vote.
Right.
They can't.
We can. So there, there'll be, there'll be a hand or work basically, but a lot of the work that the consultant do is be preparing a lot of the messes that we create. And preparing a lot of the message medium that we create, but, um. There's, we're starting to branch off into responsibilities, you know, in terms of this, but there's, there's a lot to do with that.
Actually, I, I got one thing. I, I've got a six thirty appointment, but I want to say that. Two important things in right here, okay? One is the location, very important. The other one is this, okay? I'm all for this, this. And like you said, this, the time is right now, it is. And the reason I say that is, in another five years, we have to go back. To the voters for our two eight project. You guys can get this in here and get it gone in there, then in a sense, the feeling of what has to happen with the mill levy and all this other stuff. Hopefully, doesn't interfere or look at people looking at it, or you guys are gonna wanna come back for more money for the roads. So I think it is important for it to happen this year, you know, for the success. And I hope it does succeed. Anything we can do to bring more people to Canyon City, rec center brings more people to wanna live here and all this other stuff. So it's real important, in my opinion. Wish you guys luck, but really, I think you need to do it this year. Whatever it is you guys decide to do, just because, like I said, five years down the road away. We're gonna go, have to go back for the extension of our two eight project, okay? Hope we can have another meeting like this. Actually, thanks.
Thank you, Frank, and that's really good.
Thanks.
I was gonna add to, just keeping after, you know, last weekend, the rec has plans for the work with the swim team to get kind of the flow going. Just to kind of start getting word out to people, get, start getting, so I think process, they're gonna start to see more and more. So some of that depends on that material we can share, share with people.
Right.
Asking for money with nothing.
Right.
It's tough to do right now, so we're all kind of waiting for that, that picture, so to speak.
We also have the Biwater Festival coming and we're gonna be doing the Fourth of July, um, celebration, celebration too.
And Brandon will put waves on everybody, so we can write it up.
No, I have a portion of their care kick those towards rec center.
Yeah, there we go.
Like the one percent for trails.
Well, I was gonna say five million, that's a cheap shot. Nick can just write a check.
I think one, one thing that we discussed, you know, possibly the city can help with that, I guess, would be tap fees. Help with the, you know, construction costs or. Discount on the water, something like that.
We'll know if we can do a discount on the water, but certainly just tap fees is something that we could look at. Tyler McCall, what is that, four inch now?
Uh, at the, at the high end, it'd be four inch. It's possibly gonna be less than that.
What are some other ways this league could help?
Uh, you know, I think, depending on what the cost of land is, if the city wanted to participate, if its council wanted to entertain the, the idea of assisting with that. That's certainly something that we can look at. Helping with the offsites, Kyle, Kyle's already mentioned, there were a little authority that's, you know, separate from city council, but, um, that's, you know, you don't have it. Banks yet, but that's certainly something we might be able to help with.
I, this idea had been kind of toyed with last year. I don't know what council's climate is for this, but we had talked about maybe dedicating like a certain amount of money per year of Canyon City general funds to reinforce property cost of the pool. If our residents to get a discount. Is that something that could be an option of doing committed general funds?
I think logistically, we'd have to look at that, obviously. Three counts, three counts in there, so, uh, but yeah, that'd be discussions we'd have to have.
Any other ways the city could help?
Um, I, I think, you know, just encouraging the developments, uh, maybe even. That's what, or that's what it looks like with the offsites.
What is the irony? Would that just be offsites?
Um, so the offsites are, no, the urban renewal, um, you know, if, if there was money or we see money come into the urban renewal authority. Uh, but maybe a couple of sets across, it just depends on where we're at to get time. What even is coming up? Uh, with the, with the development of the added property, not knowing exactly what the program is gonna be. That, that would definitely generate increments and. For you to, uh, commit some of that increment to, um, this project, but certainly something that we can conversation about as well.
And, and this kind of is a segue to, we just actually had a meeting, Mayor for Chan, Hamrick and I, and Ryan and Rick, with some developers. At the Avenue of Interest in doing some development projects. And they said on more than one occasion, that they would really like to see in conjunction or even ahead of time of their development, correct me if I'm wrong, but my interpretation was. If we can have a rec center going, that would greatly influence their decision on coming to develop in Kansas.
Who wants to be the person?
They, they don't wanna be number one. They want us to put in a rec center because that means their development would be that fish more profitable or be able to.
Assured.
Assured, more assured. And so it is.
So they're willing to invest into that because they would benefit?
No, that wasn't that, that's.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the big thing.
I mean, every, so, so the bottom line is, everybody wants, hey, a rec center is gonna improve property values. It's gonna do this, it's gonna do this. But at the same time, the people that have those financial resources coming into the community, if they invested in this to take the pressure off the taxpayers, we already discussed. What that property tax look like, if tax valuations look like, that only helps further down the road and it gives us more opportunity. If all of a sudden, there are some private investors that have donated X, whatever millions of dollars. That says something to the voters where they're like, oh, they're willing to do this. If they're willing to profit off the community, are they willing to donate into the community?
Right. And, and again, I think that, that's part of the reason why urban rules play makes sense here, because you are increasing property values within urban. There, there's that potential for that, but. We have to generate increments in order to have the money to help with.
Well, I think it's hard for investors when we don't have a stake in the ground saying, this is where it's gonna be, this is what it's gonna look like. And that's.
Yeah, this maybe is just on cut.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and I think that's, you know, where the rec district is with their draft letter of intent, um, trying to stake in, you know, exactly where it's gonna be on the avenue. You know, that, that, you know, that, that's the step where they're at right now, trying to, trying to narrow that down so that they can have that.
And did you say, Ryan, you, so you might be able to help the land acquisition costs?
That, that would be up to the city council, obviously, but, um, that's certainly something that we, we talked about previously.
We have some money for land acquisition.
I advise you guys, talking too much about it during the full session, during this negotiation.
And then there were different council members maybe at that time too. So that's something that we need to discuss. You know, we have more numbers.
You also had a pre Black Hills situation as well, so, I mean, that, that, that has to be mentioned. So the, 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 the playing field has changed slightly since that last discussion.
Well, the playing field has changed, but the commitment, for me, the commitment for recreation center happens.
Right. Now, the question I would have is, is like the interested parties in the abbey, have they submitted any kind of PUD or anything, or if they.
We just started a conversation yesterday.
Okay.
I, I would anticipate a PUD application in the next two months.
But, you know, the reason I ask is because having, you know, watched my dad take a piece of raw land and turn it into a subdivision. It's a significant amount of work and infrastructure, time and cost. And it's a whole different ball of wax than if we were to find, be able to buy a piece of property that was an open piece of property. That being said, you know, it'd be pretty hard to commit to something until we have a little bit clearer picture on what that's gonna look like at the abbey.
I think all the stars are aligned. At least, I hope so.
Yeah, it wasn't without the development of the abbey, we want the rec center.
Absolutely.
Kyle, somewhat to your point about whether they would invest in that. Rec centers, I've, I've been involved with some training recently. And then the rec centers came up. It wasn't really part of the topic, it just came up. Uh, rec center with the products. The comment was, everybody's down in the product center. A rec center in itself is not an amendment, it's an expectation. So the investors who are interested in looking at communities, they expect them to already be there. Because we're competing with a whole lot of other communities and they've already got it. That's one little checkmark that the FUD has, that this one doesn't survive the game, that's probably. For whatever, which you can, cities rec center, when they can go somewhere that exists. We're, we're a little on the, the, um.
Slow stage.
Uh, disadvantaged side because we don't have a rec center, but it's not gonna come from them to help us build a rec center.
And as there's, there's a kind of a further turn of that wheel too, is, is that, as we all know, rec centers use money. So it's a straight economic investment for a developer, it's a money issue. And so that's, that's the answer. That's why they're not really willing to invest. They're, they're, they, it's, it's an expectation. It makes it more assured that a project can go, but there's not necessarily an economic benefit, direct economic benefit. Where they see money flowing to them because they are investing in the rec center.
And they want the centers too.
So, so most of, so most of the recreation centers operate in state, the ones that are full recreation centers. They operate somewhere between eighty five and ninety five percent sustainability. So it's not like it's a fifty fifty thing. However, aquatics alone, and Woodland Park is a prime example. You're looking at, uh, a place that is fifty five percent sustainability. You can't do aquatics alone. They don't, if you have a full rec center, you get close to sustainability. You have someplace like Montrose, and I'll disagree with you on that, because Montrose is over one hundred percent sustainability. So you can do it, and there are a significant number of small communities in Colorado where they are more between ninety two and ninety eight percent sustainability. So, uh, please know that a full rec center gives you a chance at sustainability. You may not make a profit, but you may not finish as far in the red. The swimming pool, the Ico Boats swimming pool, the outdoor pool. Will finish on a percentage basis more in the red than a rec center, period. A rec center has a better chance and a better likelihood of success than aquatics alone. So the public needs to make sure they understand that.
We need to make sure that.
So.
And just as just an added sign note, we're saying it over compared to Montrose or Democrat to Montrose.
Not surprised if you look at it, he's, he or she is accurate.
I think one of the things that Kyle was maybe intimating at against the, I'm for sure, but I'm get, I'm guessing is, is that. Um, you know, this has been a, this has been a tax reassessment year, so everybody's property taxes went up. Hale starts, everybody's home and owners insurance is going up, so, uh, you need it, has a heavy foundation on, uh. Consistent income that doesn't necessarily increase, um, with raises, like a lot of private employment does. Um, retirees, those, those things weigh very heavily on their minds. And then, so we're fighting an uphill battle already of a rec center, trying to get this passed. And I think maybe what Kyle might have been intimating is, is that it would really be a feather in the hat to the voters that, you know, whether it's the city or the, the city and the developer combined. Hand in hand to try and make some contributions to try and make this happen. It would be, it would be a very strong message that this is wanted, uh, by all parties involved strongly.
That's why we're here today.
Yeah, and everybody's got some skin to gain.
We need to get the, this conversation going.
But, uh, I guess that comes down to, you know, where, where does everybody stand monetarily?
Well, we have three council members here that have the building power, but maybe, Ryan, we can then ask that you do some numbers as far as water tap fees. Land acquisition possibilities and just personally, I suppose, to run a commission, you know, commitment. I don't know how that works. We can't commit.
We're not.
Future tasks.
I think we're just trying to get a ballpark, just an idea of, you know, are we talking like a ten thousand dollar commitment, or are we talking, you know, uh, six figures?
I think we should just have a food truck rally for.
For three weekends and just tell everybody. Ninety percent.
Get it paid for.
Donate ninety percent of it, because you don't, doesn't cost very much, you know, we all know, it doesn't cost much, just suck it up, everybody, donate to the cause.
So trucks and airboats. And Greg, before you got here, we were talking.
And I, and I apologize.
Acquisition assistance and things like that. Uh, you know, four inch water tap seems three thousand dollars, so, you know, those, those are things that we can look at.
Eighty three thousand?
That's the other thing, we may not need a four inch, but it goes, so we've got fully needed, but the nice thing about pools that the waters, you know, you may need to supplement a little bit. You're actually gonna have more money on showers, sinks, toilets, water fountains than you will, actually on a pool, the exception of one time a year, but you have to. Close the pool down for a week, drain it, clean it, and then fill it again. And that's really the only time you have. So you're, it's not like you're gonna need an eight inch water tap. You may not even need a four inch tap.
What about like infrastructure things and like getting the streets in and parking lots? And is that where you are at thing? Two A is mostly just reconstruction.
Two A is reconstruction. You can't build the empty streets.
Streets, but you are a.
Yeah, I think, yeah, you, you are a, certainly, I mean, again, it depends on. Generated.
Right.
If you're into that.
I just remember on Montrose, one of the, because they went to the boat several times and it failed, and what they, and I remember them saying that. One of the things that changed the tide was that the city literally built the street. It, maybe the parking lot, literally built it before you even went to the voters, saying, or had a commitment, saying, we will build the street.
So on the fifth attempt in Montrose, they were able to put a flag in the ground and say, it goes here. And then built a street to it. That helped. So hypothetically, if we're able to say, let's say, just for the sake of argument, two, three months from now, we're able to stick a flag in the ground and say, it goes here. We've reached an agreement and dirt starts moving in October. Hypothetically.
Not on the rec center, but on the project.
But on the project, just even dirt moving in the avenue would help us with that situation. Would help us with that situation.
Well, and, and that's, you know, I think, Rick was alluding to that with PUD. They're going to have to put that infrastructure in for development if they wanted to, so that street will more than be there by the time it start, start.
For the PUD, that the PUD development will have to be done in?
Yeah, they're going, I mean, they're going to be putting it to serve, you know, the different uses on the property, and it's part of the plan.
Well, the PUD, but they also said, because they're looking at, because it's a paternity zone, and so they are looking for those tax credits for private development, and they said that that could be a two, three year process to get.
Well, so, so the group that you met with yesterday's, is, they're not the developer. They're, they're one of the, they're one of the tenants that would be going into the development. So the master developer who's going to be doing the PUD. They're, they're the ones that are going to be putting in the infrastructure, horizontal development.
They're putting in horizontal development in to lure in more private development, like a commercial.
Yeah, they, they have, in addition to the rec center or the rec district, they have other values of intent for development.
They're, they're currently, according to Rob, there are seven letters of intent to the master developer. I do not know if there's been another letter of intent turned in. I don't have that answer. But if we do come to an agreement, we know that we would at least be number eight, which means that this project is. If there's that many letters of intent, you would like to think that this project is going forward. Obviously, the recreation center, and, and there is some concern because essentially the recreation center were open and it would be in the middle of a construction zone. So we have to, you know, we have to think about those kinds of things. And, and so there would be a little bit of a drawback, but there would be some benefits too, but. It's, but, but it's exciting to see that it's going forward. But, but we would be the eighth. There are seven LOIs supporting Rob right.
That's nice to know. Any other questions or comments? So let's all put our hands in.
I, I feel, I feel like I'm off, I'm the opposite side of the table.
I'm always, I'm always one of those running the numbers in my head guy. And, and I'm just, I'm just looking at the hurdles in front of us and, and I think we really need something for a strong push. To show the voters and whether it was moving dirt over there, whether it was some sort of significant financial commitment by, you know, the city or. The developer being very generous and saying, hey, we're going to make you a really great deal on this, or donate this land. It's really an uphill battle. And I'm, and I just, and that's not because I don't want it, because I want it as much as anybody. It's part of why I got on the rec district board. But I'm just running the numbers in my head.
So Frank has said these thumbs up, and I know that the other two council members are thumbs up, and we have an opportunity to choose another council member here shortly, and that will be for you for the presentation.
I just had a quick question. Is the ultimate goal to move all of the rec district facilities to the rec center?
So. Because of the amount of square footage and price tag that goes with it, we currently own the Ash Street property and all the properties along Ash Street. We, we own it. That is owned, that is owned by the people. So we have no more lease payments. That's all done. We have district offices. If we can't afford, my opinion, and the board can speak to theirs, but I've said this in board meetings, my opinion is. It means that I have an office on Ash Street and then I have to go to the recs, rec center every day for a little bit of time. Oh, well, but if we can put money into a walk track and jog track or an exercise facility, or add a little bit larger fitness or a little bit larger gym. To give the public more bang for their buck, that's more important than the other. You look at other communities, yes, Montrose, Eaton, Estes Park, they run their recreation offices out of the rec centers. They were able to make that happen. But in our case, we have offices. If we have to be separate, it's just like City of Denver, their headquarters for recreation are not in the rec centers. It's in other locations. If we have to run that way, we have to run that way. But. It is my opinion that we have to give more bang for the buck for the community. While the board, of course, will get the final say. But, but that's, that's been my argument from the get-go. It's, it's not about the rec district staff or offices are, it's about what's the best facility for the taxpayers and the community they're serving.
And then what is the future plans if everything goes according to our plans for the Ichabod property?
So the discussions that we had initially were if we are able to get a year-round facility. We have already had some initial discussions with the Canyon City School District and looked to come up with a discussion where we sell it to them, where they look at other opportunities for the school district. Ryan has been in on those discussions as well. I don't think there's anything concrete to really report to the public, but the initial. The initial gist would be sell to the public. Keep in mind, if this, if there's a note vote, we still, the issues of the equipment pool have not changed.
Right.
They're still there. So we still have that issue to, to resolve, and hopefully we can solve that.
Awesome. Thank you. I appreciate the clarification because I think I was a little confused on some things as well, which I'm sure the public was. Same, in the same set, but I appreciate the information and I think that these conversations should happen more often.
Yeah, I, I mean.
I have one question, just real quick. Does the county get to put in anything?
Sorry. Boy, there came some laughter there. Did anybody?
I, I, we, we.
There's my answer right there. I got it.
We met with them last Monday. We had good conversations, and their focus. Right now is, is on the events center at Half Under Park. And, and that was, and that was clear, and we're working with them on an easement for a three-phase ballot. We did discuss recreation center. And I'll let the board go through any.
Did you, did you throw anything, say, throw some here, we'll do the easement for you? Go on.
We. We, we, we did not do that. Sorry.
They had reservations about making an investment into what will in their mind serve a portion of their base and lot, especially the west end of the town.
Wow, okay. Right.
I, 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 I won't speak for the county commissioners. You can talk to them. Now, we did bring up the exact same topics we did with you today. Sales tax, property tax, marijuana tax. So we brought up all those issues. The reason we brought those up is because those are the questions that the recreation district is getting. And it's only fair to have those open conversations. Like I said, we're not, we're the one now, the city is going, hey, look, we want to kick in a. Oh, I don't know, two percent sales tax to help with, to help with this. That would be up to you. Again, I'm not proposing that, but we did ask the commissioners if there was an appetite. To do that, and they said that they had not really considered that at this time.
Okay.
So we, so we left it at that. And again, Dan's question was correct. They did mention the west end. How do you pass that when you have residents in Cota Paxi Howard that are closer to the Aquatics Center in Salida than they are to the one here?
Right.
And like I said, that would be a conversation for them, but I thought they gave fair and open answers.
Ryan, I've, I've asked you to kind of do some numbers for us, but we're, we're going to need to have another meeting where the council can kind of make a decision on how they can support the rec center. So we can get that on an agenda as well, when we, when we become again.
Well, I think, yeah, we'll, we'll probably need to have an executive session to first.
Right. But we will need to have more meetings so we know where you're at and how we can.
So you're aware, we have our regular meeting, the second Tuesday of every month at seven o'clock at the rec district. We do not put the rec center on that agenda unless there'd be that executive session or something that had to be on that agenda. We do a rec center only meeting the fourth Tuesday of the month. So on the twenty-seventh, so next week, Tuesday at seven o'clock. We will have a board meeting on the recreational center. You all are more than welcome to attend or whatever else, and if you have anything that you want to bring to the table. You're more than welcome to do that, but we do that on the fourth Tuesday. About the end.
Between now and then, you guys come up with some crazy inventive ways of funding it. We're all ears. We've explored a few different options. We talked about, we were just talking, you know, marijuana recreational taxes brought up. Pretty rapidly. Showed not have the support. I think that if you're looking at these times, you gotta look at all options. It's not whether you support it or don't support it, it's, you just have to look at all options on the table.
Maybe, maybe we just tell them seventy-two million until the end, and then it'd be like thirty million.
There you go.
I don't know where I got seventy-two million.
There might have been some point where I think someone said, do everything that we wanted to do, or everything that everybody wanted to do with the, you know, the master. It would be a seventy-two million dollar project, and that's why we can't do it.
That was the initial stuff when, when rec first got together and we were, that's five years ago. When some of the rec centers that they were looking at and the square footage, of course, five years ago, you could get a lot more of that. But when everybody was putting in, we had several different, you know, user groups that were there, and we wanted this, we would, when we put it all together, it was a bit of them. And so that's when all the focus groups came together, you know, we kind of had to pare things down, and then we had the studies that kind of. Kind of put us a check and said, well, you can want all you want, this is what you're up for. So we're at one.
And if we wait another fifteen, twenty years, it will be seventy-two million.
Oh, yeah.
And we did tell Kyle, no lap pool in his office, so.
No. The, and if people want to see a rec centers, I would, the ones that I would advise to go to, I mean, Montrose, again, eighty-three thousand square feet, we're not going to be able to get an eighty thousand, eighty-three thousand square foot, so we're just not. So if you're looking at something small, you need to look at Estes Park, you need to look at Eaton. The reason I mention those two is they're smaller communities, they're conservative communities. And they also have, especially Estes, most people don't realize this, but a, a very large senior population. Most people think of it only as a tourist town at the summer. It's, it's not. There's, they have other things going on year round. So you're looking at a senior population that really drove that passage. But I would advise folks to go look at those, and if they're looking at what we're talking about on a tent or a temporary structure over the lap pool. You go to the Mac Center in Castle Rock. It's off the Plum Creek exit. It's right by Ty Cypress facility in Castle Rock. So I would recommend that you go look at that, and that is, and that is the pool that they have. Now, they don't have a lap pool there. There's this leisure, but it's basically the exact same type of structure. Just FYI.
Any final comments?
I was just going to say, any of you have people interested in helping and doing things, because we're going to need a big push. We might have to talk to Rick, I've had to talk to my life, Karen. Just to see if there's something they could do to pitch in about boots on the ground, whatever it is.
And I need influencers. Leaders in the community who are willing to speak up and use their platform. Push this, and I'm going to try to do some video.
And, and really, this is going to need support of the business community, because if it is a property tax, it does, it does impact businesses, and the business community. Is, is going to be needed to get behind this as well. Can't just be residents. It's got to be business owners as well. It's got to be a combination.
Rick, if, if you can get in touch with the Economic Development Council of Colorado, they should be able to do an economic impact study. And we can do an economic impact study of having a rec center, aquatic center.
Excellent. Well, thank you, everybody, for meeting today. We really appreciate being together and learning with that, me. I'm visiting this conversation. Excited to get it. Really willing. Hope that we can do our best to be supportive. And with that, we are adjourned.